I'd like to call to order the Scotch Plains-Fanwood Board of Education meeting. This is our open agenda meeting, rescheduled for March 16th, 2017. Mrs. Saradacki, would you please call the board?
Mrs. Brody?
Yeah.
Dr. Clancy?
Yeah.
Dr. Kowakowski?
Here.
Mr. Murray?
Here.
Mrs. Soriani?
Here.
Mrs. Cleary?
Yeah.
Mrs. Bowden?
Here.
For Miss President, thank you. Please join us in the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, and one God, with equal rights and justice for all.
So, the Board of Ed met in an executive session and discussed personnel and HIB, suspensions and detentions, and legal issues. And announcements for this meeting were given to the Borough Clerk of Fanwood, Township Clerk of Scotch Plains, to The Times and The Patch. And we do have some additions to the agenda tonight, which is three LET, which was an email from a parent about the district's cellphone policy. And then two business items, one BUS approval of staff training, and four BUS, some related services from private vendors, and sixteen BUS, which is the disposal and sale of equipment. Is that all? No one else? Okay. So, tonight's an exciting evening, and we have a full house, so we're gonna change the agenda around a little bit. We will still have an opportunity for people to come to the microphone and present anything they would like to the Board. And also, we have a number of committee reports, since this is our open agenda meeting. But tonight is a special night because we get to recognize some of our students who have represented us so well at the county and the state level as a part of the PTA Reflections Program. And so, we've asked one of our Board members, whose son is also being honored.
Daughter.
Daughter, sorry. Daughter. Who's being honored tonight, so we want to have him read the resolutions. And our other Board member on this end, Deb Brody, is gonna help him with making sure the students end up with the resolutions that he's gonna read. And we're gonna ask the principals to come forward when your student is called up, would the principals also come forward? Okay? But I think we wanted all the students to come up in the beginning. If we do want all the students, we'll be able to go through.
So, first off, I wanna just ask the students that are here, if you could just come forward. Isabel Bruce, Aditi Gokili, Taylor Murray, Emma Telefis, Luca Di Meglio, Ava Khan, Metav Metta, Kevin Wright, Emily Colasanti, and Kayla Fiori.
That's our first group.
The first ones we're gonna recognize are the ones that...
Yes, we're gonna recognize these. Yes.
First group is gonna be the group at the county level.
So, face this way, so your parents can take photos.
Come on up here.
And then turn around.
They wanna see you.
Yes. There you go. Perfect.
Make sure everybody can be seen. All right.
And principals, if you'd like to... You're gonna take pictures. Got it. All right.
Okay. Are we ready? Everybody ready?
Yeah.
And then if the principals could come up and join you, and they'll assist with the distribution of the certificates.
So, whereas the PTA Reflections Program is a nationally acclaimed student recognition program established by the National PTA, designed to encourage artistic creativity in the classroom and at home, students in grades K through 12 can reflect on the common theme and create original works of art. And whereas the theme for the 2016-2017 was "What Is Your Story?", whereby students in kindergarten through 12th grade submitted their interpretation of the theme in six artistic areas, including dance, choreography, film production, literature, music composition, photography, and visual arts. Whereas the Scotch Plains-Fanwood Parent Teacher Association, under the leadership of PTA Council President Lisa Chiroka, continues to enthusiastically participate in the National PTA Reflections Program. And whereas, the following ten Scotch Plains-Fanwood students received a certificate of participation from the Union County PTA for their creative entries. The first, Isabel Bruce, 4th grade student at Brunner School, received recognition for her literacy submission entitled "My Story." Aditi Gokil, 2nd grade student at Cole School, received recognition for her literacy submission entitled "A Night at the Hotel." Taylor Murray, 2nd grade student at Cole School, received recognition for her music composition entitled "My Lifetime Story." This is the second year in a row that Taylor's music composition has been recognized. Emma Telefis, a 3rd grade student at Cole School, received recognition for her photographic entry entitled "My Favorite Place." Luca Di Meglio, a 3rd grade student at Cole School, received recognition for his photographic entry entitled "My First Day." Ava Khan, a 4th grade student at Cole School, received recognition for her visual arts entry entitled "A Bridge Between Two Worlds." Metav Metta, a 2nd grade student at McGinn School, received recognition for his visual arts entry entitled "Feet in Two Worlds."
I'd just like to add that Dr. Swelcom wanted to express her congratulations to Metav. Unfortunately, she couldn't be with us tonight, but she's so happy the district is recognizing him.
Kevin Wright, a 3rd grade student at School One, received recognition for his visual arts entry entitled "The Voices Inside My Head." Emily Colasanti, a 5th grade student at Terrell Middle School, received county recognition for her literacy entitled "Who Am I?" And Kayla Fiori, a 5th grade student at Terrell Middle School, received county recognition for her music entry entitled "Changes." This is the third year that one of Kayla's musical entries has been recognized by the Congratulations to everyone. And thank you.
So, don't leave. Maybe, why don't we have the principals, and you all come stand behind them, and then we can take another photo. Okay.
So, the next continuing recognition is for three students at the state level. Brianna McGowan, Ellie Agnello, and Ryan Agnello. If you can step forward, please.
Get to come stand front and center again.
The following three students' entries have been received recognition from the state PTA. Brianna McGowan, an 11th grade student at Scotch Plains-Fanwood High School, received an honorable mention award for her literary entry entitled "I Am Okay." Ellie Agnello, a 4th grade student at Cole School, received an award of merit for a film production entitled "This Is My Story." And Ryan Agnello, an 8th grade student at Terrell Middle School, continues to be recognized by the State of New Jersey PTA with an award of excellence for his film production entitled "Why My Always Lead." This is the fifth year that one of Ryan's film productions is being recognized by Union County and the State of New Jersey PTA. Ryan's entry will now be judged at the national level. Congratulations and good luck, Ryan. To conclude the resolution, whereas it is truly an honor to have the creative works of these thirteen students selected from hundreds of county and statewide submissions, now therefore be it resolved that the Scotch Plains-Fanwood Board of Education extends its sincere congratulations to these students and extends best wishes for their continued
So, we wanna make this official. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, and let's take some photos. So, before we continue, we're gonna take a brief five-minute recess, and there are refreshments out in the lobbies, some cookies and some water, so help yourselves and congratulations again from all of us. So, we've had a nice break, recognizing the students who were recognized at the county and the state level with the PTA Reflections Program. And now, we're gonna continue with our agenda. And according to Policies 0164 and 0165, if there's anyone who'd like to come to the microphone. Seeing no one, we're gonna continue with committee reports. I know we have a number of reports, so who would like to begin?
I'll go.
Okay. Dr. Clancy?
The Finance Committee met on Monday, and Mrs. Saradacki viewed a number of items that she will be asking for the Board's approval on this evening. She will be asking for us to approve the 2017-2018 tentative school budget, and we'll be talking about that. Also, she is tonight asking us to agree to renew the contracts of the bus companies that we work with, specifically Durham School Services, Amaker and Porterfield, and KNS Transportation. They have all agreed to renew the contracts at the state mandated renewal rate of 0.3 increase. At our next meeting, she will be asking us to approve a number of improvements and updates to the Park Middle School Media Center. Some of the... This project was actually started several years ago, and we're now going to finish it by buying bookshelves, tables, chairs, and flexible sofa seating for a cost of $118,867.84. And this money will come from the 2015-2016 excess extraordinary aid. We will also be at our March 30th meeting, voting to approve the HVAC projects to be undertaken at the Evergreen Module Classrooms, the Cole's Module Classrooms, at Park Middle School, the first floor, Terrell Middle School, the second floor, and the Terrell Middle School Cafeteria. The total cost will be $518,374 and will be drawn from Capital Reserve. And we will also be, on March 30th, voting for the renewal of the food service contract with Quantonium's Food Services. The rate increase for 2017-18 will be 1.5 percent. Mrs. Saradacki noted that the increase for 2016-17 was actually zero. And we will also be asked at the March 30th meeting to accept the educational and Richmond Foundation grants for staff. And the committee supported board approval on all these items. And finally, she informed us that the summer roofing and masonry bid project is scheduled to be open on Tuesday, March 28th, 2017.
Are there questions? Okay. Then we'll move on to the next report. Mr. Murray?
So, I have the facilities meeting. We met on Monday as well, right before the Finance Meeting, so a couple of things might be redundant. But Dr. Clancy referred to the bids, bids for the roofing and masonry projects where obviously they're scheduled to be open on the 28th. Hopefully, we'll have those able to be awarded at the end of the month. The next item is a recommendation for approval, which the committee supports, which is updates to the Park Middle School Media Center. So, that will be monies that are gonna be drawn out of excess extraordinary aid, and I believe that's under one of the BUS items on the agenda tonight, so we're supporting that. The other is the HVAC projects, to move forward with the ones that we previously discussed, and funds will be drawn from the Capital Reserve for those as well. There is five projects on a schedule, Evergreen Modular, Cole's Modular, Park Middle School, and then Terrell Middle School, and the Terrell Middle School Cafeteria. And the remaining items are not anything that we need to vote on, really just updates. One regarding the border bottle fountains have been completed in four of the schools, Cole's, McGinn, School One, and the high school. The remaining should be completed in early spring. And then during spring break, people 10th and 11th, there's gonna be some asbestos treatments for some water pipes that feed into the bathrooms near the auditorium, so there'll be no access to the schools at that time, at the high school at that time. And then finally, as well during spring break, there's gonna be, at the high school, some work done to make two classrooms into, one small and one larger classroom, into two equally sized classrooms. So, in-house maintenance, we'll be removing the wall and constructing a new one to make both of those classroom sizes equal in size. And that concludes my report. Any questions?
Okay. I have to close this report.
Okay. Thank you.
We met on March 9th. The items on the agenda that we discussed were that Scotch Plains is still waiting to hear back from the state about the grant applications for the state groups to school. Regarding the computer training for senior citizens, the Board of Ed has students ready to help with this, as well as equipment and classroom space. Rose Truckio from the Scotch Plains Council is coordinating with Dr. Max on the scheduling of that. Chief Conley reported, regarding emergency medical coordination, Chief Conley reported that other than the bomb threat at the JCC, things have been fairly status quo. The police are making rounds inside the JCC now, much like they do at our public schools, to familiarize themselves with the layout of the building, and so the students and staff just know them as well. Regarding fair housing litigation, Scotch Plains is still in negotiations with the Fair Share Housing Authority and hoping to make progress and reach an agreement. The new court date is on March 27th, and Fanwood already has an agreement. The PAL programs have put in place, and everybody should have gotten flyers regarding this. They have scheduled at both Park and Terrell Middle Schools programs that begin on 3/28 for two days at each school. This is a pilot program, like I said, and the program will include an open gym, basketball, team building, activities, games, and obstacle course, and different stations for the children to be active. The plan is to have something lightly competitive and physically active enough, and have other activities there. It's something for the kids to do, who are not already involved in organized sports, and we keep them busy and off technology for an hour or so after school. They're looking to possibly expand the program to include homework tutoring. And Ryan Miller from the high school has told Chief Conley that he was students who would want to help out by volunteering at the program as well. And regarding online security training, Almiro Bella mentioned that the Scotch Plains will be getting into a cybersecurity class for their employees, either online or in-person training, and they will open it up to Fanwood and the Board of Ed as well, once they determine the details. And the main meeting was followed up by a computer demonstration by the Union County GIS Department of a system that they use to coordinate the police departments throughout the county for emergency security and other purposes. And our next meeting date is April 20th at 9:00 AM. And that concludes the session.
Okay. Are there questions?
Thank you.
So, do we wanna do Policy Now, or under Board Policy Section?
We can do that. I'll have a report from the Municipal Relations Committee.
Okay. I have three highlights to present. First is that project medicine drop boxes were installed in the Fanwood and Scotch Plains Police Departments. The drop boxes encouraged the appropriate disposal of expired medication and pill form. Information is on both towns' websites. Also, this week, March 13th to 17th, is Think Purple Week in the school system. The PTA supplied Purple Hearts to all the students, I Am Special Dolls, and there are other school-based activities. The elementary schools had an assembly program titled "Bullies to Buddies," presented by Connie Palmer. It was about establishing and maintaining healthy relationships with one's peers. And the middle schools had a production called "The Right Choice" by Campbell Productions. And the last highlight is that the Scotch Plains-Fanwood PTA Educational Forum is next week, March 21st, at 7:00 PM, and the topic is current drug trends by prevention links. And Detective Shawn Johnson will be representing the Scotch Plains Police Department at that. Okay.
And where is that gonna be?
Um, here, I think.
Here? Just wanted anyone watching, so no. Any other questions? Any questions? So, Mr. Murray?
Yes. So, we have some first readings of some policy, mandated policy changes to the state. It's one policy with... It's two policies. One of the policies has six regulations associated with it. All the changes are obviously mandated, so the first one is Policy 2460, Special Education. Language changes, which related to state mandated standardized testing, some minor citation changes, additional language that the district appropriately screens students for dyslexia. And then corresponding regulations to 2460. There's 2460 dot one, Special Education Location Identification and Referral. There's primarily language changes, intervention services provided through H21 when required, and change to procedures for the parental request for CST evaluation, go to the Director of Special Services, he will notify the board principal at that request. Changes regarding continuity of specially designed services warranted. There's Regulation 2460 dot eight, Special Education Free and Appropriate Public Education, which is some minor language changes and citation additions. Regulation 2460 dot nine, transition from early intervention programs to preschool programs, just had some minor language changes. Regulation 2460 dot 15, in-service training needs for professional and paraprofessional staff. It's new regulation now mandated regarding in-service training requirement, so that's a mandated change. And Regulation 2460 dot 16, Special Education and Structural Material to Blind or Disabled Students. It's a recommendation of a re-adoption of the regulation to keep it, the adoption dates for Special Education and policies and regs consistent, so no changes to the actual reg. And then, the second policy change was 2467, surrogate parents and foster parents, some minor language changes, but the primary change was content that the district shall have a person who serves as a surrogate parent coordinator. So, those are the two policy changes and the subsequent regulations for the one Special Education policy. For the first reading, please.
Any questions? Okay. Thank you very much. Any other committee reports? Okay. Then that brings us to Mrs. Saradacki walking us through the budget. This is the proposed school budget that will, if the Board approves of the saving, will be submitted to the county office tomorrow morning. It goes through a process there, then it comes back for a board hearing for actual adoption by the Board. So, this is considered a candidate budget. The process we go through is that the Board passed a resolution on February 9th, 2012, to change the election date to the November general election. This change remains in effect until changed by the Board of Ed and/or the town councils. Aligned with the change, there will not be a public vote on the 2017-18 school budget as long as we stay within the 2% cap, of which we have done with this budget. The election timelines for Board of Ed candidates, nomination petitions are due to the Union County Board of Elections by 4:00 PM on Monday, July 24th, 2017. The drawing for ballot positions by the Board of Elections will take place on August 14th, 2017, and on November 7th is election day for both Board candidates and the general elections. The new Board members who are elected will be installed in January 2018. The guidelines that we followed in creating the budget for 2017-18 are, we continue to examine all curriculum, extracurricular, administrative, and support functions of the district, and consider more cost-effective ways of operating, including additional shared services initiatives. To the extent possible, maintain appropriate class size. To the extent possible, maintain efforts in staff development, curriculum improvement, and program evaluation. Continue to implement the recommendations in areas of mandated, safety-related, energy-saving, and long-term maintenance and capital improvement projects. The district will continue to investigate opportunities to reduce energy costs, and when possible, excesses extraordinary aid will be used to meet capital and maintenance needs. Continue to implement the technology plans for the district as approved by the Board, including technology in the classroom for a building. Continue to seek ways to provide new and innovative programs, develop priorities of programs to be maintained or considered for change. Give priority to seek grant funding from federal and state governments, corporations, and foundations. And every effort will be made to maintain unrestricted fund balance in accordance with state guidelines of 2%. When excess surplus is realized, deposits will be made into capital and maintenance reserves. You'll see that there are two insurance policies that have 0%, but they have much fewer people enrolled in them. The bulk of the people in the district are involved, involved in the PPO medical, um, which gives us a 14% average of the total cost. Salary increases will reflect an amount equal to the anticipated settlement for the teamsters and administrators, and the actual amount will be budgeted for all of their staff. Staffing will be adjusted to reflect the anticipated enrollment trends. Technology funding will remain at current levels. Principal allotments will be adjusted for the changing enrollment in the schools. Supervisor budgets will be maintained at 2016-17 levels, with increases made for staff development where determined to be necessary. Utility appropriations are increased as stated, the natural gas by 2%, electricity by 2.5%, and water by 1.5%. And revenue for state aid will remain at the same level as 2016-17. This was an assumption from into the budget process, and that is actually what has come through, is that our budget, our state aid, as you'll see later, is exactly the same. Enrollment trends over the past six years, uh, we have a six-year change of three students district-wide over six years. The major expenses to operate our schools are salaries, benefits, special education services, instructional support services, transportation of students, utilities, maintenance and custodial services, and commercial insurance. The highlights are curriculum initiatives for next year. STEAM, scope, and sequence development. Elementary grades two to three full-option science system, year two and three. We did kindergarten and grade one, I believe, last year, and our plan is for the following year to do grades four and five. High school science, next-generation science standards, scope and sequence. Health and physical education, scope and sequence. Elementary language arts and mathematics pacing guides. Kindergarten interdisciplinary unit development. Media literacy and technology, scope and sequence review. Middle school star unit development. Continued support of teacher coaching and teacher leadership programs. Tri-state consortium consultancy for language arts. Grades three and five developmental reading assessment. We are planning on new texts for AP Economics, Anatomy and Physiology, and the FOS for grades two and three. Teacher professional development will focus on classroom studies, multiple intelligence and inspirations, integrating music movement, art and writing, and additional consultations and workshops. Staffing changes proposed for 2017-18, and these are all for existing programs. Uh, we are in need of a kindergarten, we anticipate needing an additional kindergarten teacher, two elementary teachers, a middle school teacher, and these are all due to class size. Um, high school teacher for multiple disabled resource, um, students. A lunch general aide. Student aides for special education. A part-time athletic trainer. And we do have one cafeteria employee retiring, so that's a net of 6.86, um, additional staff that are included in the budget. Our proposed operating budget, if you look at the line, you'll see salaries, benefits, out-of-district tuition, facility maintenance, transportation, capital expenditures, other expenses, and net operating budget. That's the line that is really the true comparison, because the amounts funded from the reserve, even though they go into what's considered the total operating budget for 2016-17, they're, um, not 2016-17 anymore. So you'll see the primary comparison is between 89,001,2588 and 90, oh, sorry, 89 million and 91,135,521. You'll see here it shows salaries are 56% of our budget, benefits are 41%, the total of 77% of our budget. Tuition paid both for out-of-district special needs students as well as to the magnet school, total is 9% of the budget. Facilities and maintenance is 3% of the budget. Transportation is 3% of the budget. Capital expenditures, 1%, and other expenses is 7%. Those other expenses, the $6,452,610, covers all classroom and office supplies, nurse supplies, computer software for classrooms and offices, textbooks, media center books and supplies, all purchases for district security, teacher workshops and training, classroom and office furniture, legal, audit, and other professional services, technology purchases outside of the lease purchase, because we do have a capital lease purchase that is renewed every year, postage, copy machines and paper, testing materials, telephone costs and internet access, all extracurricular activities, general insurance, and purchase services, for example, occupational therapy, physical therapy, speech, AVA therapy, special ed nursing services, and home instruction. The total proposed tax levy for 2017-18 would be 88,993,407. It's made up of the operating fund levy and the debt service payment. The annual tax impact per average home in Scotch Plains is $180.41, a percentage increase of 2.22. And for Fanwood, the average tax, annual tax impact for the average home is $245.30, percentage increase of 3.47. The tax levy is made up of a 2% increase over the 2016-17 tax levy, and that keeps us under the cap, or at the cap, and an adjustment for increase in healthcare costs of 719,017. Uh, we're choosing not to use the enrollment adjustment, which we would also be, um, according to the state, able to raise, uh, in the 2017-18 taxes. That 475,471 will become bank cap that the district can choose to use over the next three years, and if they don't choose to use it, it disappears. Our operating revenue is derived from the local tax levy, fund balance, which is money we carried over that was surplus last year, that we, um, in the budget intentionally brought it forward to use in 2017-18. Other local sources includes, uh, interest income, facilities, rentals, uh, prior year tuition refunds that we occasionally get. It includes our E-Rate funds, state aid, extraordinary aid, and federal medic aid for a total of 91,135,521. Our state aid for 2017-18, uh, based on the numbers provided to us from the state on March 2nd, are exactly the same as the numbers we received last year. Our revenue from federal aid, this is a number provided to us by the state that we're required to budget as income, uh, they have told us that we should anticipate receiving $27,448 from the STEM program. The capital and maintenance items budgeted for next year, uh, we have our technology lease purchase, which is $650,000. Musical instruments in the amount of $20,000. 3D printers, one for each of the middle schools, and this will primarily be used for technology class, but, um, could potentially be used by other subject areas also, $5,000. Bathroom upgrades we're continuing with at $30,000. Custodial equipment at $10,000, and the New Jersey State Debt Service Assessment of 165,446 based on money that we received as grants back in 2000, 2002. We also receive revenue from grants and entitlements. Um, we receive IDEA money, uh, in the amount of, we receive IDEA and IDEA preschool, Title One, Title Two A, and Title Three. And these revenues are used for very specific items. Uh, we use currently our IDEA money primarily for, um, out-of-district tuition for special ed students. Our Title One money is used to run some programs, both after school and during the summer, for students at risk. Title Two A is used for professional development, and Title Three A is used for ESL students. We have revenues from the state sources, which are, um, ELI, Early Launch to Learning Initiative, with, which helps with our cost for our preschool program. And we have non-public Chapter 192, 193, that is flow-through money that the state provides to the districts who are responsible to give it to the non-public schools. We also have revenues from local sources. That's primarily our pay-to-play athletic teams and tuition for preschool, and the cost of, um, the money that the operating fund transfers in to help fund the balance of the preschool cost. And here's some of our celebrations, uh, some photos of our students in kindergarten and preschool. And science, uh, we have McGinn kindergarten class, as well as a high school of science class, when they visited the students to science program at a science syllabary. The budget supports technology, both in the classroom and in the information service systems. We will see McGinn and Evergreen students at work. Our technology priorities are laptop refresh cycle, which we try to refresh laptops within five or six years, expanding our Chromebook carts and network maintenance and updates. Professional development is a high priority. Teacher coaching and teacher leadership programs, classroom embedded professional development, STEAM unit development, integrating the arts and writing, professional development academy, and that takes place both during the summer and after school. Here are some award-winning students. These are our honor societies for world language. We have Chinese, Italian, French, and Spanish. We have 2017 National Hispanic Recognition Program scholars, Ian McPherson and Isaac Pulaski. We have our 2017 Commended Students National Merit Scholarship Program. Our valedictorian and seminorian, Caroline McNichol and Max Mizursky. And our candidate for the United States President Scholars, Scholars Program, and she achieved a perfect score on the ACT, the Gleam and the Purge. Our athletic teams, you'll see bowling, swimming, girls soccer, and wrestling. We had 16 seniors sign national letters of intent on National Signing Day on February 1st, from what I understand is the most students that we've had signed in a given year. Our award-winning region choir. Bye Bye Bernie. The rep theater program that is currently going on, if anybody wants to see it, it's on the screen down there. It's a very fun show. Park Middle School Drama Club prepares for the musical honk. And the Tarell Middle School Players presented Alice in Wonderland. We have examples of family community engagement here. We had runner recycles for animals. School One Science Fair, Junior Achievement Day, where Scotch Plains Fanwood High School students present at Falls. Several of our educators were recognized for excellence just a few weeks ago, uh, with the Governor Educator of the Year Award, um, at the district level. 2016 New Jersey Exemplary Educators Award recipients were Courtney Nemec and Dr. Sasha Slocum. And I'd like to review the budget timeline. February 28th, the Governor's Budget Address took place. On March 2nd, state aid was released. March 16th, the preliminary budget adoption. March 20th, the budget is due to the county. April 5th, PTA Council Budget Presentation at 9:00 AM. All members of the public are welcome to attend. April 19th, there will be two more public budget presentations here at the Administration Building, 9:30 AM and 7:30 PM. And April 27th is the public hearing and final adoption of the budget. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Saradaki, that was a very thorough report. Let's see what questions, comments, clarifications we have. Anyone?
I have a comment.
Yes?
I just want to thank Debbie and the administration. So, from a finance committee perspective, I know we've been through infinite meetings in finite detail of each of the different milestones, and I, I could tell you that it's a testament to how fiscally responsible this district continues to be with regards to the way funds are allocated and the way, you know, the focus is with them. So I just want to say thank you, because I think it's a great job, once again.
Anyone else? Questions or comments, clarifications? Okay.
I would like to echo what Mr. Murray said, and, and again point out that, um, that our maintenance is within the
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Sarah Dackey, that was a very thorough report. Let's see what questions, comments, clarifications we have. Anyone?
I have a comment.
Yes.
I just want to thank Debbie and the administration. So, from a finance committee perspective, I know we've been through infinite meetings in finite detail of each of the different mylders, and I could tell you that it's a testament to how fiscally responsible this district continues to be with regards to the way funds are allocated and the way, you know, the focus is with them. So I just want to say thank you because I think it's a great job, once again.
Anyone else? Questions or comments? Okay. I would like to echo what Mr. Murray said and again point out that our maintenance is within the budget. You know, we aren't going out for bond or other kinds of requests to the public. And I think that's important to note. And you did a good job of balancing, showing, you know, all the, or not all, but some of the impact of what the money is accomplishing, even though we are, you know, limited, have a cap. And if you go online and look, you can see we have never recovered from the cuts that we had in the past. But we have continued, I say we, the administration and, you know, the schools, the principals, supervisors to accomplish a lot for our students. So, thank you very much. And that brings us to then, the motions. Now, we have to do these tonight because you're taking them to the county tomorrow. Correct? I don't remember who this is. I don't remember that either. Maybe someone from the Finance Committee would like to move these, move the motion, Mr. Murray?
Sure. So, move that the Board of Education approves the 2017-2018 tentative school budget as follows. I'm going to read the whole, I'm going to read the whole thing, right? So, adjusted bank cap, be it resolved that the Scotch Plains Family Board of Education includes in the proposed budget the adjustment for bank cap in accordance with NJAC 6A 23A 10.3B. The district has fully exhausted all of the statutory spending authority and must increase the base budget in the amount of $0. Adjustment enrollment, resolve that the Scotch Plains Family Board of Education includes in the proposed budget the adjustment for enrollment in the amount of $0. The district intends to utilize this adjustment for supplies and material necessary for the additional students. Adjustment health benefits, resolve that the Scotch Plains Family Board of Education includes in the proposed budget the adjustment for increased costs of health benefits in the amount of $719,017. The additional funds are included in the base budget board to use to pay for additional increases in health benefits. Adjustment to PERS pension, resolve that the Scotch Plains Family Board of Education includes in the proposed budget the adjustment for deferral of the PERS pension costs and the additional interest incurred in the amount of $0. The district intends to utilize this adjustment for the proper, for the purpose of paying the additional interest charges. Adjustment responsibility transferred, resolve that the Scotch Plains Family Board of Education includes in the proposed budget the adjustment for increased costs associated with the transfer of responsibilities in the amount of $0. The district intends to utilize this adjustment for increased decrease for the costs. Capital Reserve Account Withdrawal, resolve that the Scotch Plains Family Board of Education requests the approval of Capital Reserve Withdrawal in the amount of $0. Capital Reserve Account Deposit, resolve that the Scotch Plains Family Board of Education requests the approval of undesignated Capital Reserve Deposit in the amount of $0. Travel and related expenses reimbursement 2017-2018, whereas the Scotch Plains Family Board of Education recognizes school staff and board members' travel expenses related to and within the scope of their current responsibility, with the travel that promotes the delivery of instruction or furthers the efficient operation of the school district. And whereas NJAC 6A 23B-1 dot one at Pet's Sequence requires board members to receive approval for these expenses by the majority of the full swing, the full voting membership of the board of staff and members to receive prior approval of the expenses by the superintendent of schools and the majority of the full voting membership of the board. And whereas, the Board of Education may establish for regular district business travel only an annual school year threshold of $150 per staff member, where board approval shall not be required unless this annual threshold for staff member is exceeded in a given school year, July 1 to June 30. And whereas, travel and related expenses not in compliance with NJAC 6A 23B dot one dash one dot one, but deemed by this Board of Education to be necessary and unavoidable as noted on the approved Board of Education out-of-district travel and reimbursement forms. Now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Education approves all travel not in compliance with NJAC 6A 23B dash one dot one, if being necessary and unavoidable as noted on the approved Board of Education out-of-district travel and reimbursement forms. And be it further resolved, the Board of Education approves travel and related expense reimbursements in accordance with NJAC 6A 23B dash one dot two B to a maximum expenditure of $200,000 for all staff and board members. Adoption of tentative budget 2017-2018, be it resolved that the tentative budget be approved for the 2017-2018 school year using the 2017-2018 stated figures and the second period of the Board of Education be authorized to submit the following tentative budget to the executive county superintendent of schools for approval in accordance with the statutory deadline. So, 2017-2018 total expenditures, general fund $91,135,521. Special revenues $2,425,415. Debt service $1,467,050. Total $95,027,986. Less Capital Reserve Withdrawal, zero across each of those sections. Less anticipated revenues under the general fund $4,509,164. Special revenues $2,425,415. Nothing under debt service in a total of $6.934,579. Taxes to be raised, general fund $86,626,357, zero under special revenues, $1,467,050 under debt service for a total of $88,93,407. And to advertise said tentative budget in The Times, a local newspaper, in accordance with a form suggested by the State Department of Education and according to law. And be it further resolved that the meeting can be held at the Scotch Plains Family Board of Education, Evergreen Avenue, Cedar Street, Scotch Plains, New Jersey, on April 27, 2017 at 8:00 p.m., in the purpose of conducting a public hearing on the budget for the 2017-2018 school year.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Emma. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I think I heard everyone say aye. Okay. Congratulations. Take it to the county, let's see what they say. All right, we're going to move on to letters to the board. One LET was the receipt of an email dated March 3rd, 2017 regarding Terrell Middle School Auditorium speaker system. Two LET was receipt of a letter dated March 1st in the matter of Parker interior plant scape. And three LET was a letter from a parent regarding cellphone policy. And the latter two were referred to executive session, and the first one, I believe, Mrs. Sarah Dackey already took care of. The superintendent's report.
Thank you. I'm pleased to report that at this time we have no out-of-district placements to approve. At our next meeting on March 30th, I will ask that the board affirm the superintendent's decisions in the two harassment, intimidation, and bullying cases that were reported during executive session on February 16th and February 23rd, 2017. Curriculum will be meeting on March 20th, and we will bring to you anything that comes forward from the curriculum committee at that time. And for us tonight, I would ask that the board approve the field trips as listed on the agenda. Our high school Mandarin students would like to attend the Louis Yip Tennis, Table Tennis Center in Dunellen. Actually, it's very exciting because they are going to be with someone who actually trains Olympic champions in the paint. Terrell Middle School eighth grade French students would like to visit Cafe Paris Restaurant in Cranford in connection with their studies. And Terrell Middle School students who are part of Holloway's Homework Club and the Terrell Middle School Agents for Change Student Leadership Group and the Heroes and Deeds Program at Terrell plan to visit the Museum of the American Revolution in Philadelphia on May 30th. And finally, the Scotch Plains Stanley High School French students would like to attend the New York City Restaurant Limon, again, to learn more about French cuisine, French etiquette, and compare American foods with French foods.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And tonight, I would ask the board to approve the personnel agenda as reviewed in exec this evening.
All those.
Second.
Okay, Mrs. Sarah Dackey, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mrs. Brody?
Yes.
Dr. Clancy?
Yes.
Mrs. Suriani?
Yes.
Mrs. Clayrie?
Yes, with the stipulation discussed in exec.
And Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
Thank you, and that concludes my report.
Okay. Mrs. Sarah Dackey, that brings us to the business functions. And I know some are for tonight and some are for our next meeting.
I can just go through them in order if that's okay. One B U S, I'm asking for the board to approve the superintendent's recommendations for staff training reimbursements on the report dated March 16th, and also on the additional report on additions to the agenda.
Can we have a motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And two B U S, I'll be asking for the board to acknowledge receipt of the disbursement listings for the month of February 2017 for various bank accounts. Three B U S, I'll be asking for the board to acknowledge receipt of the district school security and fire drill reports for the month of February 2017. Four B U S, I'll be asking the board to approve related services from vendors, additional in the two that are listed on the agenda, as well as the one additional one on additions to the agenda. These are for BCBA services at First Children, LGTC services, and also speech services at the Craig School. Five B U S, I'll be asking, the results of our bid will be, a bid opening will take place on March 28th for the summer roofing projects for the high school and Brunner Elementary. And as long as that bid opening is successful, and our board attorney has time to review the bid results as well, before the meeting on the 30th, I'll be asking for the board to approve awarding for bid. Six B U S, I'll be asking the board to approve acceptance of the following grants that are listed from the EEF Foundation. And these are for various schools, Coveting into the Future for McGinn, Art in School Garden at Brunner, Flexible Seating at Park, Get Moving with Articulation at School One, Steam Ahead at Brunner, Building Community One Book at a Time at Brunner, Mobile Journalism at the High School, and educating our middle school students, and that's with both Park and Terrell Middle School. Seven B U S, I would like the board's approval this evening. That's for our transportation contract renewals. They, we were successful in getting the transportation companies to agree to a 0.3% increase, which is all the state is allowing this year, for all of our packages and for transportation for next year.
Can I have a motion?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
H B U S, I'll be asking for the board to approve the purchase of tables, chairs, shelving units, including installation of the shelving units, and sofas for the Park Middle School Media Center. All these purchases are under the M R E S C bid, and the chairs are under the state contract. Funding will be drawn from the 2015-16 excess extraordinary aid. Nine B U S, I'll be asking for the board to approve HVAC work at Kohl's for two modular classrooms, at Evergreen for two modular classrooms. These are both for heat and cooling for these modular classrooms, and the systems are quite old. And we did replace one as emergency repair this year at School One, and these two are the same age as that one. Park Middle School addition of an HVAC system for the first floor, Terrell Middle School for the second floor, and Terrell Middle School for the cafeteria. And that's under the Ed Data Co-op Pricing System bid for a total of $518,374. Ten B U S, I'll be asking for the board to approve a contract renewal with our food service management company, Comptonian Food Services, at a rate increase of 1.5%. There was a zero point increase, a 0% increase in 2016-17. Eleven B U S, I'm asking for the board approval tonight of the semi-correction, corrective action plan. You should have received the copy of the plan. And that's to approve the 2016, this was for the year 2015-16, Special Education Medicaid Initiative Corrective Action Plan in accordance with NJAC 6A 23A-5.3 EF and G. And this plan will be submitted as part of the district's budget submission.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Twelve B U S, I'll be asking for the board's approval of the amendment to the NCOB for 2016-17. And what this does is incorporate the carryover from 2015-16 into the $2,017 amount. So, this gives us authority to resubmit the grant with these additional funds. And the total Title I then would be $134,840, and the total Title II would be $122,179.
I think we have a motion. One motion. Okay. Okay. All those in favor?
Thirteen B U S, I'll be asking for the board's approval to purchase installation of the cafeteria tables, and this money is drawn from the cafeteria fund, which is an enterprise fund. Be replacing the cafeteria tables at the Evergreen Cafeteria. We should be receiving the place within the next week. Fourteen B U S, I'm going to ask at our next meeting for the board to acknowledge receipt of the board secretary's report, the treasurer's school funds report, and the budget adjustments for the month of February 2017. And fifteen B U S will be, I'll be asking for the Board of Education to approve bills for the period of February 16th, 2017 through March 27th, 2017. And that is it.
And sixteen?
Was it sixteen?
Oh. I didn't see that one.
Yes, but I'm aware of it.
I think you put it on here.
Yes, when you see this motion next time, it will have all the information for govdeals.org. We're asking for approval of the disposal of the equipment listed. It's outdated and equipment with very little value, and we'd like to advertise it on the govdeals.org website. So I'll be asking for that on the 30th also.
Okay. So, for all the items that we're going to be voting on at the next meeting, any questions, comments, clarifications on any of these items from Mrs. Sarah Dackey? I know the committees have discussed them, but, all right, so there's, yes.
I just had one thing for the, for the purpose of the public to know that the cafeteria tables are being, you had told us, are being.
We're doing every school. We're putting new cafeteria tables in most of the schools at this point.
In the main, in the elementary cafeterias, the rooms that are used for the students' eating, Evergreen School will be the last of the elementary schools.
And that was actually, if I, the cafeteria enterprise fund is the money that we make from the cafeteria, from selling food. So it's using our own funds to.
It's using the cafeteria funds. Which. It's using the cafeteria funds, which can't mix with the operating funds. It's a separate, and we have to use the money. The state won't allow us to keep more than three months of expenses in that account.
And you also told us how...
So, and we always try to do things that, it is used for replacing appliances in the kitchens and things like that too, but we always try to do things to make the lunch atmosphere nicer for the students too.
Yeah, and when you talked about the, you know, safety of the tables and...
Yes.
Much, much better than they had been made in the, in the past. So I'm glad all the children are going to be able to use those.
Yes, the new tables have an entirely different locking mechanism, but does keep the students safe.
Thank you for that highlight. Anyone else? Questions, comments, clarifications? There's still time between now and our next meeting, and also to contact Mrs. Saradaki in between if there are any additional questions. Okay, we did policies. Any new board business? Okay. Under other board business, are there any requests to attend workshops? Workshop reports? Okay. The next, at our next meeting, someone will have the opportunity to move the resolution for the National Autism Awareness Month. And we also have the scheduled dates, which will be approving for 17-18 for the Board of Ed meetings. Are there any? I know people have had these to see, so. For OBB? I see here, participation, this is like a participation in the 2017 Memorial Day Parade. Is there anyone who, we haven't done this in a while because people usually have been involved in the parade with their children or in other ways, and is there anyone who wants to... All right. We'll be approving the minutes at the next meeting as well. So now, according to policy 0164 and 0165, we have another opportunity for members of the public to come to the microphone if anyone is interested. Seeing no one, that brings us to the Good of the Order. Dr. Kulakowski?
I am, Ms. Sizzi. Since the last meeting that we had, I was able to participate in the Read Across America at both the Kohl's School and School One on Thursday and Friday respectively on March 2nd and 3rd. And in my little mail packet tonight, I got some lovely thank you notes from the classes at the Kohl's School, and then another one from the students at School One. So that was so lovely. I did not expect this at all. I was honored to be asked to go and read at the schools. And then I had some of my students go to Brunner, Kohl's, Evergreen, and School One to see the remaining pre-K students that didn't make it to the clinic for to give kids a smile. So we have reached out to all of the pre-K students in the district as of the 6th and 7th of March. Wonderful. And then Sunday, myself, Evan, I don't know who else was in the audience, that we saw the lovely Bye Bye Birdie show. It was excellent.
Oh, and tomorrow.
Every year, it just, they just did so much better, and the production and all the colors and the dancing, it's just, it was amazing. It really was great.
Thank you for having us be able to attend.
Yes.
There is still time. I think it was mentioned earlier, but still time this weekend, so. Anyone else for the Good of the Order?
I also did, went to School One for, and read for the two first grade classes, and I got this lovely note, and it was a sign on the inside, all the kids left us. And this wonderful packet, I got it at home and read it. It looks like each kid wrote a little...
Oh, my.
Yeah, beautiful. So, I'll just make sure to do that every year. I read a long book, which is a little tough, but it was a lot of fun, so I thank those last few people.
I also read at Kohl's, and I got a nice little card signed from everybody, a picture and letters too. That was great.
Several of us were able to attend on March 1st at the high school, the Healthing, I'm not going to know what it's called, the Healthing Initiatives Day, I'm not quite sure, where each, each grade had a, a presentation about, about issues. And it was really terrific. I was able to sit in on the human, human trafficking workshop, which was...
Yes, and I was there, I saw Dr. Mikey Fow, and I was there for... Yeah, yeah, I mean, you were there. The follow-up story. Yeah, so you were there, and I saw the 11th grade, and I know, I know Tanya was, was also there. She also watched one of them. So it's a wonderful program every year where they highlight topics of, of interest among people. So we're all glad to be here.
Okay, wonderful. I just wanted to mention we have new art again. I'm not sure, the artwork is at Terrell Middle School. So, we have wonderful artwork around. So I think it's always very pleasant when we walk in, so. Okay. And I think Dr. Mast and Mrs. Saradaki got to go to senior citizens today, right?
I did have the opportunity to go and observe, name that tune. Senior, she was quite expert at it.
Oh, very nice. All right, well, that brings us to a motion to adjourn. Is there anyone? Okay. All those in favor? Have a good evening, everyone.
Thank you.